I'd like to officially call to order the Planning Commission meeting of April 3rd of 2025. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. Commissioner Braus, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Happy to. Please stand.
Thank you, Commissioner Braus. At this time, members of the public may address the Commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. If you would like to make a comment, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the Commission Secretary. The speaker cards are available at the Agenda Review Table by the entrance. Madam Commission Secretary, have we received any speaker cards for non-agendized items?
I have not received any.
Thank you. Okay. This is a time for the Commission to consider matters listed in the consent calendar. Have we received any comments from members of the public on the consent calendar?
None received.
Thank you. Do any commissioners wish to discuss this item, or is there any motion to approve the consent calendar? If not...
I'll move it. I'll second.
Thank you. Go ahead and please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on the minute since I wasn't here at last meeting. I did watch the video, but just since I didn't participate, I'll abstain on that one item. I probably should have said that at the beginning, sorry.
And if you can press your button, please. Commissioner Grable.
Okay.
There should be an abstaining option on your screen. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Grable abstaining.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now hear item two, which is a public hearing still open from the March 6th meeting. Director Gail Ackerman will introduce this item.
This item is a use permit for Hypnotique Wellness Center to establish a massage business on Bridger Road. This item was continued from the March 6th Planning Commission meeting so that the staff in the city attorney's office could draft findings to reflect the sentiments of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
Yes, we did receive one public comment from Bryant McMillan.
Okay.
One request to speak.
You're welcome to come forward, Mr. McMillan.
Please come to the podium.
Please state your name and your place of residence for our benefit.
My name's Bryant McMillan.
Okay.
Is this, am I under a three-minute clock here?
Yes, you are.
Okay, it doesn't say that in the agenda, by the way.
I understand that, but that's our policy.
Is this for public comments about this particular item?
No. Public comments are typically limited to three minutes. If it's something pertinent, you know, I may make an exception, but for the amount of three minutes, please.
I'm sorry, I just, would you mind saying that again, please?
I said, our policy is typically three minutes. Depending on where you are, I may allow you a little bit more time, but typically, we want you to hold it to three minutes.
Okay, then it's a waste of time. Obviously, I can't complete any meaningful comments regarding this complicated, it's a, this is a complicated resolution with far-reaching implications, and for me to try to have any say is going to take a lot longer than, you know, three minutes. So, I guess I just have to, it's just, there's no point in even starting, so.
How much time do you think you need?
I'm sorry?
How much time do you think you need?
Half an hour?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I don't, if this was, was this the applicant? Since that wasn't the last meeting, was it, this is not the applicant?
No, this is not the applicant.
So, not someone representing the applicant?
No, he does not represent the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any, do many members of the Commission have any questions or comments for discussion?
I was just going to move approval of the item.
Okay.
Chair, let in, and Commissioners, if I may, one of the things I want to note, that there is on the dais in front of you, a written comment from, I believe it was Mr. McMillan, who was just at the podium, and so that is in the record and has been lodged in the administrative record. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very much. Do we have any other comments from members of the public? We just had somebody who just came in.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Yes, we're on item two.
Yes, you may.
Were you the applicant? I didn't really finish it yet.
If I remember, you are the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I was looking over to notes, and I had some concerns. I think there's some sort of misunderstanding that we are not a massage establishment only. I understand the sensitivity issue on this business, and I just, like, we're not, we're not a massage establishment as you think we are. It's a wellness center, and, I mean, with the park issue, I mean, we do close at 6:00, if that's your concern, and, let me see here, and also the comic book store, if that's a concern too. I don't know if you look at the map, the comic book store is, it's inside the parking lot, and we are actually at the end of the cul-de-sac. So, there's no visibility of our wellness center, you know, with the children, if that's your concern, but I don't see why that would be a concern for us, but, or, I understand it's a potential violation, or, like, what we would do, like, with the, you know, what the last meeting we had with the other stores, we're not, we're not like that. We're not a spa. We are, we're a wellness center, and it's only going to be my wife and my uncle that's going to be working there later in the future. If it does get more clients, then we would hire somebody, but as of now, I mean, it's just my wife, and I don't, I don't think she would, yeah, that's like, not that type of person. And also, the tenant improvements that we did, we, I didn't know, this is our first time ever doing any type of business, and it's not like we built it here and we were conducting, you know, massage operation or anything. I mean, as I told you guys before, I did go to planning desk, and we, I did ask what kind of business we can use here, what is permitted and what's not permitted. We don't even have massage tables in those rooms. It's one room, we have a sofa and a beanbag, and in the other rooms, we have a sofa and a lounge kind of chair, like, your feet up, and in the other rooms, just empty. So, we, we're not actually, yeah, these walls weren't created for the massage, or whatever you guys called it. We're not, we're not a massage establishment. I just want to get this use permit so that we may, I mean, no one's even going to get, like, fully, they're not going to be clothes off or nothing, it's just the upper body. And as I showed you before, I stole one again, it's just this, right? There's no hands that's going to touch the body, only to, you know, there's no hand-to-body pressure, it's just using this that's steamed, and it's hot, and that's just, it just stays there. Sometimes there's pressure depending on the type of, you know, massage balls you get, but other than that, I can't stress enough that we are, we're not a massage place, we're just, I just want to get this use permit, so I don't, I don't want to get in trouble in the future, so, that's, I don't know what else to do.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Commissioners, have any questions? Go ahead, Francis.
Can I ask a question of staff, since, you know, I'll admit, there was a little bit of confusion between last time and the comments the applicant is making this time. What caused the necess, what necessitates the need to have a massage permit, given the fact that the applicant is stating that, you know, they're not even going to have massage tables, they're not going, there's going to be no hand contact? What necessitates legally having to get that specific type of permit to operate this type of business, if he's saying it's differentiated?
Chair and Commissioners, if I could address the question. If I could direct your attention to page 46 of your packets. So, this is a page that is the excerpted ordinance from the municipal code that regulates massage, and that page in particular has definitions, and if you look about midway on the page, you'll see a definition for massage. And so, what it says is that massage means any method of pressure on or friction against, or stroking, kneading, rubbing, tapping, pounding, et cetera, of the human body. And so, that's essentially the reason why the applicant's use constitutes a massage use, and consequently, why he would need the use permit for the massage establishment, and beyond that, the massage license.
And is that definition in our code, is that a generally, like, a general use code? Do some cities use a more prescriptive wording to kind of differentiate from these types of instances, or is ours broader on purpose, or?
There's certainly a variation between cities, but generally, most cities write their codes by reference to other codes. So, it's a typical practice when you're doing code writing to look at codes of other cities and take the good and discard the bad and so forth. So, generally, you don't see a lot of significant variation with these types of things from other jurisdictions. Now, I can't speak across the board that they're all the same, but it's generally going to be the same for most cities.
So, did you want to...
And if I may, Chair and Commissioners, that definition for massage does go on to say that that work may be done with parts of the human body with hands, or with the aid of any mechanical or electrical apparatus, or other appliances, or device. So, it doesn't, it's not just limited to hands, but it contemplates other items to be used as well.
And then, after that, of course, there's the definition of massage establishment, which is also related. So, definition for massage, and then a separate one for massage establishment.
I guess, like, I'm now seeing the difference between what, in my mind, I picture between a massage establishment and what this gentleman applicant is wanting to do could, is there, is that kind of like a gray area for us, if it's like, we differentiate within the code and how it's applied? You know, like, is applying it on a case-by-case basis, even though it technically falls under that definition that's in our code?
Chair and Commissioners, I don't believe there's any gray area. You know, massage uses and land uses are pretty typical, in that, you know, we're pretty familiar with them, and I'm sure that the city staff has processed many of them over the years. And so, my understanding is when the applicant came into staff and said, here's what I plan to do, immediately it was categorized as that is a massage establishment, with a private room in the back to provide service to customers, and whether it's using apparatus or hands, it's kind of that, you know, massage as defined in the code. Having written and examined other codes, I can't, I concur with Mr. Santos in that the definition here is pretty typical, but there may be variations, you know, among cities.
Yeah, if I may. So, I did ask planning in the email on what I was actually going to do, and, like, I did research, and since Lake Forest doesn't require business license, I asked them about the massage establishment from the beginning, and I did, let's see, it's because holistic therapy and stress management, those two categories fall under the massage establishment in your city, but they did tell me it's going to be a long process, and it's going to be difficult to get approved. So, for the first two months, or three months, we, they helped us to define what our business is, and they did say we are, we are a personal care service, so, and they did instruct me to, like, basically, we can touch the human body, like, we can, that's why in the beginning, we were just selling these, rather than doing it at the store. We were just teaching them how to do it, and then that's okay, just as long as we don't do it there. But, again, like, when we end up selling this and just teaching them, they just don't come back.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, so...
Commissioner Grable, go ahead.
So, we're looking at with the strict application of the zoning ordinance what it says, and so, we have to follow within the confines of what the ordinance, or what the zoning ordinance allows and the description of it. And so, I hear what you're saying.
Yes.
I understand how you're differentiating your services from what other services that, you know, other kinds of establishments would offer, and I understand that there are differences. However, when you look at the strict application of what the ordinance says, it clearly puts your type of service into that category. So, however it's characterized, whether it's characterized as massage or personal care, whatever, it still has the same, you know, the same legal applications that we have to still look at it, you know, through that lens. And so, as we do that, then we move on to the next part, and then we look at compatibility of use, you know, through the surrounding area. And after viewing the video from, you know, last, the last meeting, I won't, I won't, rehash that since I wasn't here, but I understand the concerns, but I want you to understand that how the Commission has to look at it through that lens of what the law actually says through our ordinances defining the type of establishment. And so, yours does clearly fill within that, just from an understanding, but I hear what you're saying as far as how you're differentiating your services from others.
Yes, I just don't want to be labeled into that category. I don't even want to have that name massage in our thing. We don't want to have advertising anything massage, it was just going to be an accessory. So, I mean, it's...
Commissioner Vilbock, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question for staff. In regards to the massage ordinance and the application and the permit that was being considered at last meeting for adoption, or is now being considered for denial today, is, if that was to be issued in the way that this gentleman is mentioning that he's utilizing massage, or what he's describing, I agree matches the ordinance of requirement of a massage parlor, but what I'm trying to get at is, if it was issued, he could do anything in the massage business regardless of what's being said here, whether it's through just this one device or another devices, he could put massage tables and do the full massage that...
Chair and Commissioners, that's correct. A massage conditional use permit allows just that, massages. So, unless conditioned, you know, the panoply of the ability to give different types of massages would be, you know, offered, and then, not only that, conditional use permits run with the land, and so, if that person vacates, and the next person who is there would also be able to have all the rights and the burdens of that conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
And a follow-up question. In addition to the findings here and the conditions, and being able to operate and as all of the services on, as a massage parlor, is there the ability to put other conditions that would go counter to that? So, for example, I'll just use an example because it's the first top, coming off the top of my head. So, not utilizing or having on-site massage tables, or something similar to that, not saying that that's it, but just that's an example. Is that able to be incorporated into the use permit, sir?
Chair and Commissioners, conditions may be imposed on a, you know, a use permit. There's only a couple of requirements in the law when it comes to conditions. One is that it makes sense, it's, there's a nexus, right, to the use, and then it's proportional, so it doesn't go above and beyond, to the point where, you know, it doesn't make sense any longer. I mean practically, right? It's a request for a massage establishment, land use, and so, to now exclude massage tables, that, the commission, or, it is for a massage use. So, while it would be in the discretion of the Planning Commission to impose conditions that have a nexus to the use and are proportional, there is that practical aspect as well.
Any other Commissioners have any other questions?
I mean, is there, taking what you're saying, like, I'm just trying to see if there's a way that we could do something with the code, I mean, maybe continue this, and maybe staff could work on the code and provide recommended amendments to the code itself that would allow differentiation enough to allow a business like this to continue without that, or if you're saying that's not possible, it just has to be massage, period. Is it possible to differentiate within the code to that extent, or it's just too prescriptive at that point?
Chair and Commissioners, it's in the discretion of the Planning Commission if the Commission would like to continue the item for, you know, to inquire of staff and provide, you know, some direction that, you know, staff can explore these things. I think I've mentioned at a previous public hearing that the city is already exploring some of those items, they're not before you today, but they are being explored. But, the Planning Commission has the discretion on how it wants to, you know, handle this matter.
Does the applicant also have the ability to reapply at a later date?
I will defer this to Mr. Santos. I believe there's a provision in the code that may apply.
Yeah, Chair, I believe, and I would also like to reference the code, but I believe that the Commission could deny the application without prejudice, meaning that the applicant could reapply. And I believe that there's a provision in the code that says when an application is denied, that the applicant can't reapply for substantially the same request within a certain period, which I believe is a year.
Two years.
But, if it were denied without prejudice, then it's a provision that would allow the applicant to reapply within that timeframe that would otherwise not be allowed.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Commissioner Grable.
So, hypothetically, if an applicant, you know, seeing that there's some consternation on the Commission's part in terms of understanding the applicant's, you know, proposal, but we're looking at the application for what it is, which is a general application. If an applicant came back and requested a conditional use permit and wrote in their own conditions as, this is, these are, this is what we're proposing, that we be adhered to, the standards we're adhering to voluntarily, then we would be acting on that application with those kinds of self-imposed conditions that would not be conditions that we're imposing upon the applicant, but the applicant is imposing upon itself. So, in that, is that something that an applicant could do, we could consider, you know, some voluntary action so that, well, as a way to differentiate the service under the strict application of the actual ordinance?
Absolutely. I mean, I think with a conditional use permit, the conditions are usually, we want the applicant to consent, right? And certainly, if they're offering it voluntarily, then they've consented. Certainly, it has to be acceptable to the city, especially the Planning Commission. But, at any time, the applicant can propose conditions for the Commission's consideration.
So, in that, in that kind of circumstance, then, I mean, we, as a body, it's a public hearing, we can make a ruling, one way or another, on this matter, but if an applicant were to voluntarily say, I would like to withdraw my application, or I would like to withdraw further consideration tonight so I can amend my application to adhere to these other rules I'm going to set for myself, and then that application, we would be actually considering as kind of a new, a new application at that point, or a new set of circumstances.
Chair and Commissioners, that's a possibility. Certainly, the applicant could withdraw if the applicant would like, and...
So, I just have one follow-up. So, one follow-up to that, and I'll stop, is if we were to consider an application that was amended to say very strictly, this is what we're going to adhere to. So, like, for example, if in the case of a massage establishment, they said, we're not going to have tables, that would be something that the applicant is proposing to us, and we could consider that, as opposed to us saying, you can't have tables, because in the ordinance, it allows tables. In that, so in that case, could then, if, in that same example, they were to perhaps put in tables, which would be a clear violation of their own application that the Commission then, or had approved, the process to withdraw that... that the commission then or had approved, the process to withdraw that, that conditional use permit? What does that look like? Is that, is that a long, arduous process? Is that something that, that, you know, as far as the due process of that? Or because it's a self-imposed condition, the fact that they violated their own conditions, that that could be revoked virtually immediately?
So in the instance of if and when a permit violates a condition of approval, before that, it's a code enforcement issue. So it's something that the city would need to go out and, you know, verify, right? We'd need that substance. And then the process to revoke a permit would be similar to what you're seeing here originally. It would be a public hearing with notice given to the applicant to satisfy due process. It would be a resolution with findings. There are findings required to be able to revoke, as we've seen at the last hearing, right? And we would need, the city would need to meet the evidence that is required to support those findings.
So timeframe, what, what, how protracted is that?
I would say the timeframe to revoke a permit, because we'd need to notice it publicly in a newspaper, I believe, would be a couple of months at the very least to notice it, properly draft the documents and bring it to the, the planning commission.
So our exposure is 60 to 90 days?
It could be as little as 60 to 90 days.
How long was the last one? How long did the, the last revocation take?
I believe when you, you know, what's the last revocation? We did consider a revocation regarding Oasis Massage, for the record. That did take a while. That began when there was an Orange County Sheriff Department investigation, I believe in 2023. I might be wrong. But it, it did, it was a longer process, as the city was informed and took the steps. There were, there were other steps that occurred, including the non-renewal of the license. So there were other issues that, or processes that occurred over a years-long period. Not to say that it needed to be necessarily that long, but it, from the time the city discovered it to when it was actually revoked was a while.
Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Santos.
With respect to your initial question, Mr. Grable, Commissioner Grable. So condition number four on the original staff recommendation, this is a, a standard practice condition that we apply to almost all entitlement applications. It says in this case, "The massage establishment shall be maintained in substantial conformance with the plans and the project description approved by the commission." So generally speaking, we're doing exactly what Commissioner Grable said with every application, that they're being limited to substantial conformance with what they propose. That being said, the applicant's proposal wouldn't, to, to give a sort of an exaggerated example, they're not saying that they're going to have a chair or not have a chair. And so if they had a chair, staff would not be looking at that and saying, well, you're in violation of your, your project description and therefore you're violation of your use permit. So if the commission is inclined to restrict the use in any way, the, the best practice would be to have a specific restriction on that rather than to rely on the substantial conformance with the applicant's plan.
But if the applicant voluntarily says, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to be more restrictive than even what you, the commission, may place on me in, in more, because I, I, I saw the condition. It's still more of a general condition.
Yes.
But if an applicant says, I'm not going to do this, 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 and this, because that's not what my business is, even though other establishments clearly would have those items, but he's, he's, he or she is restricting their own use, then we'd be entertaining that under the, under the components that they're, that they're stating that they're going to be using or, and the components that they're not going to be using. So if they violate that by bringing in things that they weren't going to be using and code enforcement doesn't, does a, 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 an inspection, then, then, then not only would it be in violation, but that condition use permit, we could stipulate that that is an automatic, goes into the revocation process. But it, but it enables an applicant to now tailor their, their application to be potentially, if they're doing things that are, are concerning to us as being objectionable, then that's one thing. But if they're, if they're not going to be doing things that, that would not be considered objectionable by voluntarily confining them to that, then, then we'd be, we'd be looking at a much more narrow focus and might create a pathway that might have a little bit more consideration from members of the commission. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. But my point was more that, that the commission may be looking for something explicitly stated with respect to their, their desire in terms of allowances or prohibitions, rather than something that might be general and subject to interpretation.
I'm just thinking developers and builders do it all the time. When, when you're, when you're doing a, you know, developing some kind, a lot of times they'll come in and they'll put in their own restrictions under, you know, that are different from what the zoning might allow, but do it under a separate process through the conditional use permit to do that. And then those, those components are looked at as being, you know, in its context, relative to development, you know, but a business is, is kind of the same thing. You're just, it's, it's a business that has, it's, it's, it's physically there. There's requirements that, that are going to be placed on it as a, as a, you know, from a building standpoint, from an interior standpoint. But if you come up with a, if the applicant comes up and says, I'm willing, I'm going to restrict myself to these things, then we'd be considering just an establishment with that use. And, and we could, we could ignore some of the other extraneous things that may be in the ordinance, but would be restricted by virtue of the applicant restricting itself.
Okay, I would like to, I guess after hearing everything that I've heard tonight, I, would the staff be willing to have a negotiation with our applicant here to see if there's something we can do with self-imposed restrictions? I mean, there's no sense of restricting if the staff doesn't want to look at it. I mean, that's kind of my question. Is that something you would consider?
We can certainly follow up the applicant, to work with the applicant, yes.
Mr. Applicant, would you be willing to work with the city to see if there's something we could do to improve this situation?
Yes. Does that mean I have to pay all the fees again?
I mean, that's a question, that's a question for Gail and Amy to answer.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Does that mean I have to pay all the fees again, the $6,000?
No.
All that other stuff?
Not fees again, no.
No?
But it, we do, for staff time, there is a cost, but we can work with you.
Okay, or, because then I heard reapply. So I don't know if that means like apply again with, with restrictions.
I think we should work through that.
Yeah.
It'd be amending your application.
Yeah.
The application you have is already in the process.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Just making changes to it.
Yes.
I guess from a, I think at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would like to, I would entertain a motion from one of the commissioners to allow this matter to be continued and have the applicant work with the staff.
If I may clarify, that would be to a date uncertain. So we wouldn't have a, necessarily bring it back at the next meeting, given.
I guess on my perspective, it could be the next meeting or the one after, but I wouldn't let it go any longer than that. I'd say maybe 60 days. Does that, does that work at all with?
To a date certain. We can certainly come back in 60 days.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for that.
And should we, for the record, should we leave the public hearing open?
Yeah, that was my question too. Do we leave the public hearing open?
My suggestion is that if we are, if the direction, if the motion ends up being that there may be an amended application and discussions between the city and the applicant, that might take a little bit of time. Let's close the public hearing. We can always reopen the public hearing at a later time. But it sounds like there might be a little bit more, you know, discussions needed before we know when this is going to be complete.
Okay. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Chairman, if the, if the commission's intent is to commission it to a, the regularly scheduled meeting date, which would be two months from now, it would be helpful if we referenced that specific date of the meeting for a continuance that is to a date specific.
Okay, we can continue it for 60 days.
Will that require a renoticement? Will it be renoticed?
You have to renotice it again.
It, it would need to be renoticed if we do not specify the specific date that the meeting would, would be. If we're just generally saying, in the future, approximately 60 days, we, we, we would need to renotice it. If we're continuing it to the June 3rd meeting or whatever the date the commission, I don't have a calendar.
They wanted me to move it to the June meeting. Would you have support for that?
I, I would actually prefer that be renoticed if there's going to be some changes to it. I believe that there needs to be transparency. So I think just leaving it to a date uncertain with a goal for the June meeting would be more appropriate so that the public can have time to also see what the changes are and be noticed appropriately.
Does that work out for the staff?
Yes, so what I'm hearing, Chair, is to continue the item to a date certain, renotice it as a public hearing to happen at the regular meeting of the planning commission on that date.
Yes, that is correct.
And that date is June 5th.
So basically we're doing a continuance, so we don't take any further action?
That's correct.
The notice period is 30 days, is that correct?
It takes about three weeks in advance of the hearing is, is when we are sending the notice to the newspaper, which is, it's, it's actually 10 days in advance, but the newspaper publishes once a week and they needed a week in advance, so it's about three weeks before.
So that gives about a month to work through. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing for item number.
Do we need to take a vote? Yes.
Do we have to do a motion to continue?
Could we please have a motion? I believe I heard the motion without a second or a vote.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to, 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 um, to continue the, the public hearing. And this would be continuing to the June 5th meeting, I believe.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, with the renotice provision.
We'll need to vote on that.
Who was the second on that motion?
I was.
Commissioner Barra.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now we'll go on to public hearing for item number three. And this will be introduced by Director Ackerman.
Yes, item three is an amendment to the general plan, public safety element, the municipal code, chapter 11, and the sequo significance threshold, thresholds to address noise policies and standards and to incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan into the general plan. And with that, Ron Santos has a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. So this is an item that was spurred by the 2020 general plan update. That update added new mixed-use designations that, together with the zoning changes that followed, provided for residential and non-residential uses on the same property or on separate parcels in proximity to each other, mixed use. Recognizing that our current noise ordinance standards do not address mixed-use development, the updated general plan safety element included actions which are effectively directives to update the municipal code, specifically chapter 11.16, which is where our noise regulations reside, to address mixed use. In addition, the updated safety element included actions to minimize noise exposure of sensitive developments to noise, establish construction-related noise and vibration standards, update the city's sequo impact threshold, and achieve consistency between the general plan, the muni code, and the sequo noise thresholds. So that's the backup to this update of the city's noise policies and standards, which are encompassed in the three documents that I referenced, the general plan, public safety element, municipal code, chapter 11.16, and the city's local sequo threshold guide. These documents guide land use decisions, set limits on noise from various sources, and establish thresholds for determining a project's potential environmental impacts. Staff kicked off this update effort with the issuance of requests for proposals for consulting services and ultimately entered into a contract with Ringcon Consulting, which is a firm versed in noise science and regulation. Over the next several months, Ringcon and city staff, including the city attorney's office, worked collaboratively to produce the draft documents that are part of your agenda package. The documents were posted on the city's website to allow for public review and comment. The update considered recent legal challenges regarding construction noise and also allowed for a 90-day Native American tribal consultation period, which is a requirement by law for general plan amendments. In general, the draft amendments update and implement the actions in the general plan, public safety element, simplify and clarify the city's noise standards and regulations, incorporate contemporary best practices for regulation of noise, and provide for consistency between the three documents. The amendments are presented in detailed summary tables in and attached to your staff report, as well as in redline versions and clean versions of the docs that are part of the draft resolutions. So next, I'd like to provide an overview of the specific amendments to each document, starting with the general plan, which includes noise-related policies, actions, and criteria. The amendments include new, modified, and deleted policies, actions, and criteria for determining land use compatibility. Deleted actions correspond to those directives that are being addressed by this update and therefore are no longer needed in the general plan. The compatibility criteria assist the city with making land use decisions, such as on entitlement applications for development projects or on zone changes. And in those instances, determining whether proposed land uses are compatible with existing surrounding uses with respect to noise. Hand in hand with that are the new and 2040 scenario noise contour maps, which are based on the noise background report that was prepared in conjunction with the 2040 general plan update. These maps indicate what the traffic noise exposure is along the city's primary roadways. The amendments also include wordsmithing, simplifications, and clarifications. One example is the deletion of table PS2, which includes noise limits for stationary noise sources. These noise standards are currently and more appropriately addressed in the muni code. Deleting this table accomplishes all the things that I mentioned. It avoids redundancy and potential inconsistency with the code, and it simplifies and clarifies. Additionally, by deleting these standards from the general plan, we facilitate any future amendments that may be needed, which would be only to the muni code as opposed to both documents. The general plan amendment also adds a footnote to goal PS-5 related to emergency operations that effectively incorporates the local hazard mitigation program into the public safety element. That was a plan that was recently adopted by the city council. This is unrelated to noise, but we are taking the opportunity to accomplish this together with other updates to the public safety element, in part because state law limits the number of times that we can amend the general plan. Next is the amendments to chapter 11.16 of the muni code, which is where the city's noise limits are codified. The proposed amendments include new, modified, and deleted definitions, clarification with respect to how noise levels are measured, new exterior noise limits, including for mixed-use developments, the elimination of interior noise standards, new limits on construction noise and vibration, and modified provisions for enforcement of noise. noise and vibration, and modified provisions for enforcement of noise violations. And finally, additionally, a new permit to temporarily exceed noise limits section, which replaces the variance procedure and noise variance board, which the city has never established. Instead, the code amendment would render such requests subject to the city manager's Another example of the simplification that would be accomplished is illustrated with this current slide, which shows current regulatory provisions to be deleted. As shown in the slide, the current code sets noise limits that are graduated based on the duration of the noise. For example, it allows a ten dB A increase for noises that occur cumulatively for more than five minutes in any hour, versus noise that occurs for more than thirty minutes in any hour. These standards are difficult to enforce, and they're difficult for a noise generator, such as a business owner, for example, to assess whether they are in compliance. These restrictions are replaced in the code, this update that we're presenting, with a standard that considers the average noise level over fifteen-minute intervals, along with the maximum limit for noises that are intermittent. Lastly, is the city's local thresholds of significance guide for implementing SEQA. This is a document that is referenced by staff when assessing the potential environmental impacts of a project, for example, in conjunction with an environmental impact report. The proposed amendments establish new thresholds for construction noise and vibration, which are from the Muni code, they're just repeated in that document, along with amended standards for noise that are related to construction. Additionally, the amendments address a Supreme Court decision that determine it is no longer the purview of the California Environmental Quality Act to evaluate the impact of existing environmental conditions on a project. SEQA is concerned, as you are aware, with a project's impact on the environment, and not the other way around, so that was simply a deletion from the thresholds that is not consistent with law. Accordingly, this is a provision that would be deleted from the SEQA threshold guide. The draft amendments also include a revised list of potential mitigation measures, and deletes measures that are, for example, overly vague, or a code requirement, as opposed to something that would qualify as mitigation. An example of this is requiring adherence to the city's allowed construction hours. That's a code requirement that's currently in the threshold, and so it can't be applied as mitigation, because it's not going beyond what is already required. The draft amendment also adds new potential mitigation measures that are likely to reduce noise levels more than those that are being deleted. Staff is recommending that the Commission adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council of the amendments to the general plan Public Safety Element, similarly, adopt a resolution recommending approval of amendments to the Lake Forest Municipal Code, and finally, adopt a resolution recommending approval of amendments to the city's local thresholds of significance guide for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes my presentation. Happy to field any questions. Mr. Bill Vostie, who is with Ringcon, again, who was our consultant on this project, is also in attendance, and he's available to help with any technical questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
I have not received any.
Okay. Do any members of the Commission have any questions or comments for discussion?
I have one question for Mr. Santos. The noises that it includes, can you talk about that? Is it just, is it construction? Is it somebody singing out in the street? Is it a vehicle noise? Is it an animal? Can you kind of provide some details?
The city's noise standards would cover all of those, and virtually all noises that occur. We do have separate provisions for construction noise, so distinct regulations for construction noise versus general city noises.
And what about animals, like barking dogs? I know that is sometimes a quality-of-life issue that occurs in neighborhoods.
The ordinance would cover those noises as well, noises associated with animals, dogs, yes.
So for the dogs, it would have to bark for fifteen minutes, straight?
Not necessarily, but the idea is that generally, the city would, well, first of all, as a code enforcement matter, there's always the sort of, the warning process, right? So before the city engages into what might be potentially costly noise measurement processes, it's, code enforcement typically contacts the alleged violator and advises, we received a complaint about your barking dog, please try to keep it down. If the noises don't cease and the complaints continue, then we would advance to the next stage of code enforcement, and that might involve taking noise measurements, so setting up a noise meter. And so the noise meter would be set up to record continuously, and then it would determine the average noise limit, or average noise level over fifteen-minute increments, and effectively, that's the noise level that we're looking at. And then beyond that, as I mentioned, the code, as proposed, amended, includes a maximum noise limit, so that would apply to noises that occur, like a bell, or a whistle, or something that is more shorter in duration, as opposed to measure over the fifteen minutes.
So in essence, a chihuahua might never hit that note, and a German shepherd might, because there's not going to be any enforcement until that code enforcement has a noise determining sensor, because there's not a separate animal noise ordinance. For example, there's a neighbor of mine that has a rooster. It's really fun at five in the morning on the weekends. That doesn't go continuous for fifteen minutes, and I'm just trying to say how the others and the other residents that might be experiencing anything like this, how they could, you know, get assistance, because I'm pretty sure code enforcement's not here at five in the morning. I'm not sure if the sheriff's department would respond to a rooster noise, and I just want to make sure our residents have some options instead of reducing it, so.
Yes, so where the city would set up a noise meter, it wouldn't be a matter of setting it up for fifteen minutes, and then we pull it off and take it away. It would be set up continuous for a given period, say twenty-four hours, and then the device is taking measurements all along, but in terms of establishing the noise limit, it's looking at that fifteen-minute increment. It's also considering that maximum noise level that would occur, for example, on a single bark. If a single bark exceeded that maximum noise limit, that would be a violation.
If I may, our code enforcement supervisor is here and could speak to that specific complaint as well.
I mean, I think also, the fact of, you could come up, sir, is the fact of having a noise determining sensor, to me, makes sense for like loud, constant equipment, or an air conditioner, or, you know, a DJ or something to that, that nature, not for like an animal that is more, you know, variety, right? So I just want to make sure that that's an opportunity for us to take care. Maybe you could share some experience with animal noise complaints.
Yeah, sure, thank you, Commissioners. So for animals, the specific provisions in our code, so under Title X, under our Animal Keeping Restraint of Animals code, there is a section specifically for nuisances that prohibits any owner to maintain or keep an animal that causes a nuisance. That doesn't matter on time limits, or the level of the noise, if it's determined that animal is causing a nuisance, it would be a violation. And then also, just on the rooster thing, our property maintenance and nuisance code was updated last year and prohibited roosters specifically.
So in regards to a complaint from a resident, or a concern from a resident, would code enforcement have to be on-site and hear the rooster to take action, or how does that go?
So if we get complaints, there's two ways. Either we get evidence from the resident, maybe they've recorded that. Generally, we will always investigate the nuisance anyway, so if we know the location of the rooster, we will approach that property, ask them, you know, seek evidence that there isn't one there. We do also have noise monitoring equipment that we can use that can record and keep a track of noise twenty-four hours a day, so that could also be used in the extreme case. But typically, with them, they're resolved just by knocking a door and speaking to the resident. So if there's a specific issue you're having, then be welcome to look into it.
No, I mean, we could talk offline about that. It definitely is occurring. I didn't make it up, but I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't restricting some of the more animal, more quote-unquote "normal" noises that we have in this area. This is, so it's good to hear that we have a separate one, yes.
And if I may, there's a specific chapter on barking dogs. It's ten point three two. It defines, you know, how long a dog is barking to the point that it becomes a public nuisance, and there is a provision that provides that if an enforcement officer did not see or hear the animal barking, and it could be based on a complaint, one of those civil citations could be based on a complaint as well.
Probably something to do with the victim possibly signing as well.
Yeah, and just to clarify, city attorney's comment there, that particular barking dogs section of code is enforced by the Orange County Animal Care Agency, so that is something that they have under their authority. So typically, they take those complaints and deal with those, and they follow that process for us.
Thank you, thanks, Chair. Nothing further.
Do you have any other Commissioner questions or comments?
Thank you. Quick question. Are there aspects of these updated, the updated code that are more restrictive than the current code?
Well, say, for example, with respect to vibration impacts, the city currently has no vibration impact, so that would be an example of, yes, we are establishing more restrictive standards. I would note that for SEQA purposes, we are required to assess vibration impacts, which is one of the reasons why we are incorporating standards and thresholds for vibration. Same with construction noise. Currently, our code just sets limits on construction hours, but not a limit on noise during those hours, and largely for the same reason, because SEQA requires it, and recent court cases have addressed that. The new standards would establish a limit on construction noise. It's a high limit, but it's, as opposed to having no limit at all, which is where the challenges had occurred.
Right. So in regard to noise of businesses that are operational, has, is it now more, or is it now going to be more restrictive in some instances? Let me give you an example of where I was kind of going with this. So in order to open a business, or to get a license, in certain circumstances, you have to do a noise study, correct? And certain cert, Artemis, I believe, was one that had to do a noise study, and it had to be, that was part of the approval, is that correct?
Yeah, it's actually one of the policies that is in the general plan that talks about requiring noise studies. It doesn't specify the specific circumstances when a study would be required, but generally, it's staff assessing that there is a potential for noise, and recommending to the applicant that they provide a study to assist them in getting through an entitlement process, for example, or to specifically to address an EIR or a SEQA study that requires that noise be addressed.
Okay. So in something along the lines of that Artemis, if they were, if it was not an issue in the noise study, is there anything in the new code that any business that is already approved and may be in development, or already approved and operational, would have to worry about in regard to complying with the new code?
I don't, I don't think that's the case. There's not that level of amendments to the code where businesses that are currently operating would be rendered, that are compliant with current code, would be rendered not compliant, maintaining their current operations.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other Commissioners have questions?
Just one, this is kind of a newbie question. So the sixty-decibel level that's been cited is kind of the minimum, is sixty the new sixty-five? Because I just recall a lot of noise ordinances that I've come across, and, you know, during the old SEQA days, sixty-five was kind of the minimum standard. Has that been lowered?
Yeah, so is the report, I believe, discusses sixty dB A is the noise level that corresponds to a typical conversation level, and so there was a, there is a provision in the code that addresses noise levels below sixty, and talks about if you're increasing noise above that, and so that's one provision that staff has eliminated in the current amendments with the idea that if you're under sixty, you're not creating a noise issue or a noise nuisance. So effectively, above sixty is where our noise standards begin.
So my question is, is sixty the new standard for most jurisdictions, even outside of Lake Forest, or is that, or is it just Lake Forest's standard?
Perhaps we can invite Mr. Vostie up to comment on that. He might have a little more general experience with noise regulations in other jurisdictions, and...
Could you please identify your name and place of residence for the record?
Yeah, I'm Bill Vostie. I work with Ringcon Consultants as the noise manager. I live in San Marcos, North County, San Diego. Yeah, so I work with noise ordinances all throughout the state. So I think what you're referring to, there's kind of two-part, two standards here, and they're both in these documents, where there's the land use compatibility standards, where that's where, okay, I want to build a new apartment, and then the planning staff will look at, well, what's the noise levels where you're putting that apartment? And that's probably where that sixty-five approximate number comes from, because that's where you're going to be exposing this, these new residents to like traffic noise from a freeway or road. Then you have your municipal code standards, which are more, you know, I have animals on my property, or I have, I'm running a generator, and, you know, I'm generating noise to my neighbor, and what is the limit there? Those numbers are typically smaller, or lower, in most jurisdictions. So this proposed one here is sixty decibels during the daytime, and fifty decibels at night, and so that's pretty standard. Some jurisdictions are a little lower on that, and some have forty-five at night, some have fifty-five during the day. But when it comes to the planning, the land use compatibility standards, those are typically sixty to sixty-five. I think sixty or sixty-five, you'll find that pretty consistent. For a single-family residential, for multi-family, it usually goes up by five decibels, things like that, so.
Chair and Commissioner, I would add to that, that these standards are standard in residential zones. So for example, we're not, these are not standards that apply to most businesses in the city unless they are, say, adjacent to residential, and that's where the noise is occurring, but they're not, they're not affecting industrial zones or commercial zones.
So ambient noise on, you know, on a residential street, quiet, sixty would be appropriate, but if that neighborhood is next to a secondary arterial highway, sixty-five still works? And is that right? Sixty, I mean, so, because we're talking about, you're comparing, you're saying you're comparing apples, I'm comparing apples to oranges. So you're looking at land use standards that would be looking at ambient levels from maybe noise off-site, as opposed to noise within the neighborhood itself?
Yeah, I think so, and so, you know, that, the land use compatibility standards are a little bit higher, because transportation noise is just, you want to build closer to these major roadways, and so it's telling the planning staff to, you know, have the developer have certain noise controls on their exterior or interior, whereas when you're talking about, you know, kind of neighbor-to-neighbor kind of generating noise, that tends to be something that is considered, you know, more of a nuisance at a lower level.
Got it.
You will, you will, there are jurisdictions that have sixty-five for that sort of thing, but that's, I think, an exception. It's usually fifty-five, sixty, that range.
That answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions from Commissioners? I just had one quick question. How do you measure the vibration? When you've established a vibration standard, how do you measure that, and what equipment do you use?
Yeah, so there are vibration meters that you can, you can put out, and they will detect the vibration, so if it got to that level of, there's a complaint about vibration, and we need to check, you know, a consultant can be hired, or code enforcement can potentially rent the meters, that sort of thing, and you can put those out and get a reading that way.
Thank you. Do we have any of that equipment in the city now, or are we procuring it?
Specifically to vibrations, no, but we do have noise monitoring equipment that we have currently just finished a trial on, that we are procuring and into an agreement with.
Okay, so vibration is something we're still looking at?
Sure.
In addition to that, say, in the case of a construction project, for example, the city would likely put that burden on the construction crew, on the developer, to produce those noise vibr, or those vibration...
to produce those noise vibr, or those vibration level analysis if it was necessary, rather than the city needing to do that. So that is the, the developer would hire a firm that would produce those vibration studies.
So basically, they would still hire a firm to monitor their construction during the construction period for vibration?
If, if it's a project that was determined that vibration, the potential for vibration to be significant was likely.
And so that's, that's a condition you would probably apply to their permit.
That's correct, and potentially, and perhaps likely, it would be a mitigation measure as part of an environmental document, a CEQA document.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I close the public hearing?
I just have a comment on that, Mr. Santos, in regards to the developer, the individual that's doing the construction. They would hire the individual to do the samples, and then if they are in violation, we would trust them that they would be producing this sample that's showing that they violated the vibrations?
Yeah, it's actually common practice for developers to produce most of the studies that the city bases its determinations on with respect to CEQA. So as you're seeing a project that comes before you and there's an EIR and has a noise study, a traffic study, a geotech study, those studies are typically produced by consultants that are hired by the developer and then peer reviewed by the city staff and the city's own consultants, where we're hiring consultants.
I think we might be talking about two different things. So if there's a vibration, if they're out there and they're, you know, constructing the site for the development that we, that was approved, I get it that it would be attached before, but I'm talking about if it's currently a vibration that we're seeing is now in this ordinance and they're vibrating the area, they would also, we, they would pay to have what that vibration sample is after the approval?
That's the likely, so the idea is that you're, with the CEQA document, you're estimating what the likely vibration is, making a determination as to whether it's significant, considering potential mitigation measures if there are significant vibration impacts, and ultimately, you want to verify that the assumptions that were made during the CEQA process are actually consistent with what's happening. So if, if a CEQA document that says vibration levels are not going to exceed a certain level, you, the city may want to and typically would want to verify that that's actually the case.
Okay, let me just, so I can try to put my head around this, I'm sorry to my colleagues, but, so if I live on a street and there, down the street is a cement factory that's there, and in the cement factory, there's trucks that are constantly driving in and out and filling up their trucks at six in the morning, and they're vibrating my house. This is a new construction place that was placed in. Who is paying or how are we determining if that vibration violates?
I understand, yes.
Okay.
To your point, yes, that would be a different circumstance. At that point, we, the city doesn't have conditions of approval or the leverage, so to speak, to impose the, the business operator to do their own vibration analysis. In that case, likely, it would be something that's part of the code enforcement process where the city would procure the consultant and arrange for the analysis.
So like current violations or current potential violations are going to be handled differently than obviously CEQA approval and through the application process? That would be something that code enforcement would handle?
Yes, and keeping in mind that vibration impacts are most likely to occur in conjunction with development projects rather than the ongoing operation. That's, I'm not saying that that's across the board the case, but it's more commonly that you're going to get vibration where you're doing grading work and demolition, that sort of thing.
No, I understand. Thank you.
But that doesn't preclude the city from making a condition of approval that the, that the developer provide ongoing reports related to vibration during the project and then the city monitors those. It would seem to me that would be a better solution than the city having to pay for it.
Correct. That's actually what I was describing in the case of a development project, as opposed to what Commissioner Villalobos was describing, would be a business that is not seeking any entitlements, that they're just there and operating, and maybe a change in their operations where they are doing some activity that is generating vibration, as I understood the question that you're describing, that in that case where we don't have an entitlement that we can condition, it's a business that's been there, say, for years, and.
No, it doesn't help when their grandfather, there's not much you can do. Well, yeah, unless you get a complaint, then that's different. Any other comments before I close the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to consider approving the item as recommended by staff?
I'll move.
Move. I'll second.
Okay. I'm going to call for the vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
We're down to comments. We have director's comments tonight?
I have no comments this evening.
Okay. City attorney?
Thank you, I also have no comments tonight.
Okay. Do any commissioners have a comment? Commissioner Barajas?
With these new updated noise thresholds, I'm going to tell my kids that if they don't calm down, I'm going to have the city come out and monitor them, so look out for a complaint from this guy, but thank you so much for everything else.
Commissioner Graeble?
I'm going to have to watch the levels on my JCM 800. So I, I'm just, just to let everyone know, I will not be present at the next meeting. That is the last one of my pre-existing conditions before my appointment, so we will be far out of town for that, that meeting today, so I apologize in advance. After that, I'll be at all the others.
Well, thank you. We'll miss you. Commissioner Villalobos?
Just as long as you're back by June. No, I have no comments, Chair. Welcome. I'm glad you're, you're leading the ship. Appreciate it.
Vice Chair Standard?
No comments. Thank you.
I don't have any comments, and I'm just thankful for the staff and the hard work you're putting in to help us some of these difficult issues, and I hope we can come to some good resolutions going forward. With that, well, the meeting is adjourned, and our next meeting will be scheduled from 88th of 2025.